Good evening, I'm Jane Nagrini, President of the Wilson School Board. I'd like to call to order the February 17th, 2015 School Board Meeting. This evening, we have Brenda Mack available by phone, so if we could have a roll call, please.
Dr. Shimaleski?
Here.
Mr. Erlich?
Here.
Mr. Hop?
Here.
Mrs. Mack?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Metzger?
Here.
Mr. Nagrini?
Here.
Mrs. Reed?
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Everyone, please rise for the posting of the colors.
March. Colors? Alt. Left base. Sir, request permission to post the colors.
Post the colors.
Thank you, sir. Post! Present, arms.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Reverse colors, march. Right base. Part time, march. Forward, march.
All right, Mr. Moravich, if you could discuss our public participation policy.
There's two opportunities for the public to address the board. The first is on agenda items, which is immediately before the agenda. Second is on non-agenda items, which is at the end of the meeting. This is a three-minute opportunity to comment to the board on matters that may be come before it, and is not a question and answer, but instead is an opportunity to address issues that may come before the board for its vote. Anything on agenda items?
Okay. Regarding Wilson, good news. We had several Wilson students submit art exhibits for the Yocum Institute for Arts Education. Twenty-one students had their art exhibits juried by the panel. We had several individuals that received significant recognition. Lindsay Sanger received a first-place recognition in the high school division. Sabrina Klein, a third-place recognition in the high school division. And Anderson Dutchman received a third-place recognition in the junior high division. We also had a number of middle-school students qualify for the Regional History B in Philadelphia. They include Lindsay Chai, Brent Booker, Sam Swope, and Evan and Chris Russo. So congratulations to those Wilson students. This evening, I believe, we have a presentation. Mr. Wolf, Mr. Kaufman.
Good evening. Is this on? I'm really excited to be here tonight to recognize our boys' water polo team, who had an outstanding fall season this past fall. The boys finished with an overall record of 29 and 4. They went 12 and 1 in their league, which made them the Central Conference Champions, and it gave them the No. 1 seed out of their conference. They were the No. 2 overall seed entering the state tournament, and they went down to North Penn and beat a previously undefeated North Penn team in North Penn's home pool to capture our 17th state championship in program history. So tonight, we will be presenting each member of the team with a citation from the House of Representatives, which acknowledges them for their successful season. At this time, I would like to ask Assistant Coach Justin Raffoff to the podium to call out the members of the team. Unfortunately, Head Coach Adam Feiler couldn't make it this evening. He has a health issue that he's tending to with his baby boy, and we certainly wish them the best. But, here you go, Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman, and the school board for having us. I will introduce the members of the team. Number 1, Senior Captain Preston Hoops. Number 2, Junior Tony Covell. Number 3, Junior Quinn Lloyd. Number 4, Junior Carter Young. Number 5, Senior Josh Minehold. Number 9, Senior Christian Pilot. Number 10, Junior Tyler Diana. Number 13, Junior Keegan Lehman. Number 14, Senior Captain Matt Ginter. Number 15, Senior Captain Tristan Williams. Number 16, Junior Dominic Vitero. Number 17, Junior John Levy. Number 23, Senior Dan Willingmeyer. And number 24, Junior John Templin.
Ladies and gentlemen, how about a nice round of applause for our 2014 state champs?
Mr. Nagrini, I just wanted to point something out. They can sit. You know, over the years, we've had the opportunity to see, you know, so many different athletic programs from Wilson get acknowledged. And one thing that's always stood out to me is, in general, the aquatics program and their representation here, and in particular, the water polo program. Every time they're here, I mean, it's literally, virtually, the entire team, if not always the entire team. They are dressed as if they're ready to go on a job interview. Some of them, but they're all, they all look great. But, and they obviously take this very seriously and have respect for themselves, the board, and their parents, and the entire Wilson community should be very proud of them. Thank you, guys.
Well said. All right, if we can have a motion to approve the minutes from the February 2nd, 2015 meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Dr. Shimaleski, seconded by Mr. Wolf. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Agenda item number 1, Treasurers Report.
Mr. President, I submit the following: the Treasurers Report, Investment Report, and General Fund Financial Reports for the current period.
Is there a second to approve those reports? Mr. Erlich, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Dr. Shimaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Nagrini?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Eight for, none against.
Agenda item 2, Payment of Bills. Dr. Shimaleski?
Mr. President, I submit the following: Payment of Bills from the General Fund, and from the Capital Reserve Fund, $189,459.48.
Is there a second to pay those bills? Mr. Erlich, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Nagrini?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Dr. Shimaleski?
Yes.
Eight for, none against.
At this point, if the water polo team would like to leave, you're more than welcome to stay, listen to the rest of the exciting meeting, or you can leave at this time. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number 3, Financial Reports. Dr. Shimaleski?
Mr. President, I submit the following: Cafeteria Report, Child Care and Activity Accounts from Wilson West, Wilson Southern, and the High School for 2015, January.
Is there a second to those financial reports? Mr. Martin, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Nagrini?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Dr. Shimaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Erlich?
Yes.
Eight for, none against.
Are there any communications this evening?
There are none.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number 4. These are consent items. 4.1, Request Permission to Approve the Revised 2014-15 Field Trips and Participations as Attached. And 4.2, Request to Approve Wilson Childcare Berkshire Heights Early Learning Center. Field trip as listed below. Field trips are optional. Number of participants will be determined after permission forms are returned. The cost of the field trip plus transportation will be paid by the parent of the child attending. There will be no cost to the district. The Reading Public Museum, March 11th, 2015, has no rain date. Is there a motion to approve those 2 agenda items? Dr. Shimaleski, is there a second? Mr. Martin, any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Agenda Item Number 5, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Ruth?
Thank you, President Nagrini. Just a typical report that you would see at this point in the school year. Two people I just want to point out are professional hires. Emily Hershey is going to be taking on a reading position at our high school, which is an extremely important position, because we still do have, at the high school level, some students that struggle with reading, and we're one of the few high schools that still have professional reading teachers at the high school level, and they provide a great service for our students. And also, Christian Jaeger, who will be filling in at the elementary levels in LTS at Cornwall Terrace, and we wish her the best of luck as well. And that's my report for the season.
Thank you, Dr. Ruth. Is there a motion to approve the Superintendent's Report? Mr. Erlich, is there a second? Mr. Wolf, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Nagrini?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Dr. Shimaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Eight for, none against.
Moving on to Human Resources. 7.1, Request Approval to Enter Into a Five-Year Agreement with Dr. Cynthia Mrazeski as Assistant Superintendent of Schools in the Wilson School District, beginning April 6th, 2015, at a starting salary of $135,000. 7.2, Request Authorization to Appoint Holly Lorchak to Special Education Supervisor High School, Act 93, at a salary of $78,714 per year, effective April 13th, 2015, replacing Ann Douglas. And 7.3, Request Approval of Spring 2015 Athletic Extracurricular Stipends as Attached. Is there a motion to approve those 3 agenda items? Dr. Shimaleski, is there a second? Mr. Metzger, any questions or comments?
Just 2 comments, mine and a superintendent. When we fill leadership positions, they're so extremely important, because not only are, they fill a needed role here, but they're going to be interacting with our professional teaching staff and our students, and to have the best possible leaders in place makes a huge difference. And 2 people that we're hiring this evening, we're very excited about. Holly, if you can stand up just for a second. Holly is an experienced educator. She's presently in the Muhlenberg School District, and we just heard all kinds of glowing remarks about her ability, and she did a tremendous job during the interview. We know that she's filling in for our much-loved former supervisor, that she's replacing in Ann Douglas, and we're excited to bring you on, Holly, and wish you the best in your new role here at Wilson. So, thank you. And then Cindy, if you would stand up, and we got some phonetic pronunciation of your last name, Mrazeski. And Cindy also has been with the DCIU for the past 9 years, and has done a tremendous job in that capacity, working with all 18 school districts in Berks County, developing leadership, working with curriculum. And with PDE presently, there are many, many initiatives, and I can't think of anyone who's more skilled or knowledgeable in that area than Cindy. Cindy has 2 children that are Wilson graduates. She lives within the district, and I've known her for quite some time, and we're very excited to bring her on board here in this very important position. Congratulations, Cindy.
Are there any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Nagrini?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Dr. Shimaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Eight for, none against.
All right, under Pupil Services. Under Pupil Services, we're going to vote separately based upon a request of a fellow board member on 8.2. So at this time...
8.6.
I'm sorry, 8.6. We have moved that, then. So at this point, 8.1, Request Permission to Approve the Adoption of a Settlement Agreement and Release to Directly Pay New Story, the Tuition and Fees for a Student to Attend the New Story, Why Missing Campus, from the first day of 2015-16 School Term until the first day of the 2017-18 School Term, to settle and compromise all claims raised by the parents of a special education student, and to authorize the Board President and Secretary to execute the agreement on behalf of the district. 8.2, Request Approval of Resolution Approving and Adopting Student Discipline Waiver and Consent Agreement, dated February 3rd, 2015. 8.3, Request Approval to Contract with Emotional Wellness LLC to Perform Various Services for or on behalf of the Wilson School District. 8.4, Request Permission to Set the Graduation Date for the Class of 2016, for Saturday, June 4th, 2016. And 8.5, Request Approval of the 2015-16 Wilson School Board Meeting Dates as Attached. Is there a motion to approve those 5 agenda items? Dr. Shimaleski, is there a second? Mr. Wolf, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Nagrini?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Dr. Shimaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Eight for, none against.
Now, Agenda Item 8.6, Request Approval of the 2015-16 Wilson School District Calendar as Attached. Is there a motion to approve 8.6? Mr. Erlich, seconded by Mr. Wolf. Questions or comments? Mr. Hop?
Thank you, Mr. Nagrini. The, let me preface my comments with, I believe Dr. Ruth used this quote earlier in our pre-board meeting. He attests to quote to me, but I don't believe I created it. Reasonable people can differ. I think that there's nothing inherently wrong with the proposed calendar. I just, I disagree with it, and that's why I'm voting no. For various reasons. I try to look at the impact of the community, both in school and out of school, people with students, without students, extracurricular versus academic performance. And I see a situation where we're trying to, in theory, try to create more backend time, maybe have more time, more school days, prior to, one reason could be standardized testing. And I think the byproduct of that is taking away arguably a week of summer vacation from our students. My suggestion, and obviously, we have the motion and second, and we'll vote on it, would be to start the following Monday. The, I believe that's the 31st. If you started that day, we would have 4 days prior to the, our traditional Labor Day break, beginning that Friday, which is, which would be consistent with this school year. We would have 4 days, we had 4 days prior to the Labor Day break this year, and we would have 4 days prior to next year. The reason why I believe that is various reasons. I think first, the, taking out the actual school year is, we obviously live in a temperate climate that can change as we go outside, and that we have families that vacation, and the vacation time, we're in effect taking a week away of August for a family to go on a full week's vacation, where I don't really see, and some people might say, "What's the big deal?" I guess it's not a big, it's a big deal to me, because you're potentially taking a full week's vacation in the prime of summer, away from someone, where I don't really see any material reason to do so. There could be conjecture of why that would be beneficial, but I don't see any data driving that decision. Not that there's not reasonable arguments, and please, I'm not critical, I just disagree with it in that regard. And obviously, I acknowledge that you can do it on the backend, but I think many families would rather take a 3rd, 4th week of August off versus the 1st week of June off. Secondly, I think, and one of the factors that I take into account is the equal treatment, and clearly, there's no intentional disparate treatment here in terms of our extracurricular programs. And, you know, in talking, you know, just kind of... And, you know, in talking, you know, just kind of doing my due diligence and talking with Mr. Kaufman about the impact, because as we all know, August 17th is the start of PIAA practices. You can't start before. And each sport is unique. Water polo is unique from football, which is unique from soccer. And each sport has different coaches. Some coach are employees here, some are not. You know, it's my understanding that, like the aquatics program, for example, the water polo, thereby starting on the proposed date, their practices are not impacted by that. And however, as was explained to me when I asked, and that could be, that could have changed, but my conversation is, but for example, football, the 85 or so student athletes on that team, I believe they would lose six practices based on the timing of the start, which would not occur if you started on the 31st. My proposal's not, clearly is not due to that. That is just one factor. My family, and I'm not directly impacted by this, so, you know, but my family enjoys the outdoors, enjoys the beach, and I don't want to take away a week's vacation from a family when I don't really see a material reason to do so. I don't believe that there's going to be any data that would suggest that starting four days earlier is going to materially lead to any form of improvement in standardized testing or classroom improvement. I mean, clearly, we could do what many districts have done this week. I mean, you just don't have, you're closer to the standardized test dates, and you don't have vacation days over President's Day. And if family's on vacation, they can use their five allotted days, which would be more logical in that regard. I've been long-winded enough, and I'd like to thank you for your time in this regard, but that's why I'm voting no on this.
Well, Mr., before we get to that, what's interesting in terms of the lack of data, public education has created a calendar, in the beginning, based around the agrarian calendar. And many students, at the time public education began, you know, worked on the farms in the summertime. So the lack of data, obviously, is significant based upon where we began. And sometimes it takes baby steps in terms of moving away from that. And I think that creates all kinds of other dynamics in terms of, you know, obviously with the teachers' union and with the public in general. But, you know, if we're really talking about, you know, breaking the mold as far as education is concerned and moving forward, you know, small steps towards what some people have argued for relatively more year-round schooling. I'm not saying keep your kids in school 365 days out of the year, but certainly, I think we can all agree that there would be some benefit to having education moving towards that type of an idea, where there is that sliding, if you will, I don't use the correct terminology, I believe, but, you know, where your kids are off in the summertime, and our kids need a break, and everybody needs a break, but how much is lost during that summertime? Not all kids. I think there's a lot of kids that are active, and they're reading, and they're involved in other academic camps, but there are some that aren't. So might we see some data supporting moving ahead a little bit earlier? I don't know. We won't know until certainly we give it a shot. And that's just my two cents on things. And hopefully, moving forward, you know, we've talked about it, Wilson kind of being on the forefront of a lot of things with education. And perhaps this is a step in that direction towards really changing the mindset of how education should, you know, be conducted throughout the year, as opposed to, you know, our summers off.
I guess what I'd want to do too is kind of explain the administrative position behind it. And I do appreciate Jason starting out with just saying, you know, people can disagree on different things and speak of things, and that's absolutely, we benefit from that. When we talked about our school calendar, we really thought about, yes, we do try to front-load as much as we possibly can, just because of the nature of how things shake out in an educational climate. When you're thinking about the different things that our students are faced with that have a high impact, and really are going to affect them down the road, whether it's your PSAT or your SAT, both of those happen in beginning of October, end of October. So the more education we can get in on the front end to prepare for that, the better. A new component that we're faced with now through our PDE is our Keystone exams. Our Keystone exams start at the very beginning of December, and they're for our students that are finishing their end-of-course exams, and that's when they take them in that first go-around. And this is the time also for the retakes for our students that have not achieved on that. So the more time that we can get on the front end, and in this case is, it's an extra four days of instruction, it does make a, I believe, as an educator, makes a significant difference. The one thing that I can tell you as far as research-based is, the most significant impacter of student achievement is the classroom teacher. It trumps everything, okay? Followed by the building principal, and then you get into parent socioeconomic status and everything else. And something that Jay touched on is, we find that in the summertime, there's quite a bit of loss, okay? Academic loss over the span of the summer because it's fairly long. We have some families that provide a rich environment for their children, or they get them actually engaged in things over the summer, which I can only imagine trying to give your kids a pep talk about academics at that time. But, so they're not going to suffer as much, but those children that don't have that experience, they really regress somewhat. And again, when they're faced with those Keystone exams, for instance, which are a actual graduation requirement, you can't graduate without it, the more time we have in front of those children, the better off we are. Our AP exams happen the first and second week in May, and then they wrap up. If I were advocating, if, you know, ruler of the educational world, what I would suggest is more of a longer breaks, where you have a break in the summer, okay, maybe in the heat of the summer, the mid-part of the summer. You have a good, significant break over the winter holiday season, where you might, you know, have a three-week break there. Maybe another significant break in the spring, where kids get a break, parents can go where they would like to go and do things that they would like to do. But this was driven, and we're all, I can tell you from 30, over 30 years here, every single person on this board is very, very interested in the welfare of our students, and everybody's coming from a good place, so I want to make sure I stress that. But we really do believe by having this extra instruction on the front end, it would make a significant difference in the achievement of our students. That's why we went forth with that. In regards to our extracurricular program, absolutely. Does it affect every sport? It does. Water polo, for instance, is brought up. What our coaches would do in the past is, they would try to wrap up practice by around, say, 11 o'clock, so that, many of the kids are lifeguards, aquatic sport lifeguard, so they can get to where they're working. Football has a great system that they've done over time, and it's worked out really well for them. They have multiple days of practice where, you can't argue a success, they've done a good job. Some coaches work here in the district, some coaches are outside of district, you have volunteer coaches. So there's many different things, but our coaches do good work. How we've tried to alleviate that a little bit is, we've tweaked it, we're starting on Wednesday, the 26th, we have school that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Monday would be an off day like any other the following week as far as for extracurriculars. And then on the in-service day on that Tuesday, we have a 90-minute interim break between our sessions here at school, where a team, if they chose to, could use that as a practice session during that time, but they would be, have to really modify their past practice on that Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, too. Yes, that would be different. But again, and I think everybody surmised this, but our intent here was, again, just to, as it is for everybody, we're just trying to put our kids in the best possible position, and I appreciate everybody's thoughts on this. And we got our marching orders, that's what we'll do, but I just want to make sure that we just knew why we were recommending what, why the administrative team was recommending what we recommended.
Mr. Martin, you've been patient.
No, that's okay. This is kind of like my pet peeve, because I always hear about how, you know, education needs to be improved and so forth, so we're cutting back on days. And year-round education is kind of like a misdemeanor, because it's really not more days, it's just spread out evenly throughout the year, which I'm not sure is a great idea. But my problem is, when you look back in history, when the United States dominated the education in the world, you know, 50s and 60s, even into early 70s, schools didn't start before Labor Day. So I understand what you're saying, because we've got to make these tests. But there is a family component, which I've been always an advocate for. Families do enjoy August. It's hot, it's warm. Kids don't enjoy going to school in that period of time. So I've always had an issue with this. And also, it's the community, the business world. I know people don't like to hear about the business. Business works, okay? They need certain students at certain times. And like it or not, I think you've got to look at the whole picture, and that's why I've always had a problem with starting early, because I think the family, to me, is more important. We always went on vacation that last week, and I just feel that it's time to stop trying to squeeze things into education, make it look, because it's not a catch-all. It's unfortunate that we have to get these tests done, but I think there's a family component which really bothers me the most. And I understand, we, you know, everybody's saying, you know, American education's failing, you know, when compared to the rest of the world, but it's not always on the same level, too. So, let's see, I don't, I could talk for hours on this subject, but that's it for me. Thanks.
Any other comments? Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Dr. Chimaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hop?
No.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Negreney? Six yes, two no. Motion carries.
Under operations, at the recommendation of the Facilities Committee, the following have been recommended. 10.1, request permission to use capital reserve funds for curbing and fencing work at Mack Field at a cost not to exceed $17,000. 10.2, request permission to use capital reserve funds for the purchase and installation of windows at the lower house cafeteria in an amount not to exceed $19,000. 10.3, request permission to use capital reserve funds for the complete removal of the current dust collection system and installation of a new dust collection system at the high school at a price not to exceed $20,000. 10.4, request permission to use capital reserve funds for the purchase of a new courier van at a cost not to exceed $24,000. 10.5, request permission to use capital reserve funds for the purchase of a new utility vehicle at a cost not to exceed $22,500. 10.6, request permission to use capital reserve funds for a lighting upgrade at the Southern Middle School Auditorium at a cost not to exceed $32,700. 10.7, request permission to use capital reserve funds for a lighting upgrade at the high school band room at a cost not to exceed $13,300. 10.8, request permission to use capital reserve funds for a lighting project at the lower house cafeteria at a cost not to exceed $5,700. 10.9, request permission to use capital reserve funds for a lighting project at the lower house weight room at a cost not to exceed $2,900. And finally, 10.10, request permission to use capital reserve funds for the purchase of a snow pusher at a cost not to exceed $4,100. Is there a motion to approve those agenda items? Mr. Martin, is there a second? Mr. Hop, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Dr. Chimaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Negreney?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Eight for, none against.
Under finance, 11.1, request approval of the 2015-16 Berks County Intermediate Unit mandated school district services budget. And 11.2, request approval of the budget transfers dated January 15th through February 11th, 2015. Is there a motion to approve those two agenda items? Mr. Ehrlich, is there a second? Mr. Metzger, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Negreney?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Dr. Chimaleski?
Yes.
Eight for, none against.
Under 16.1, request approval for the I Am Able Foundation to run three one-hour clinics in conjunction with their Got the Nerve Triathlon at the Wilson Auditorium. Additionally, we are requesting that rental fees for the auditorium facilities be waived for these clinics. Is there a motion to approve 16.1? Dr. Chimaleski, is there a second? Mr. Metzger, any questions or comments? Mr. Martin?
Are we waiving the insurance requirements?
I would think not.
No, they have the liability.
Do we still have that liability insurance?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Martin? Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Negreney?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Dr. Chimaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Eight for, none against.
All right, moving on to committee reports. BCTC, Mr. Metzger?
We have not met, the JOC of the BCTC has not met since our last meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for 7:00, Wednesday, the 25th, at 7:00 PM at the BCTC West Campus. I would just like to note that I think Dr. Lees, the executive director, is going to be very pleased that we approved the calendar, which likely has the least amount of conflict days with their schedule.
It's the same day they start.
Yeah, so, I know they'll be happy about that. Otherwise, nothing else to report.
Thank you, Mr. Metzger. Berks EIT, Mrs. Richards?
Next meeting is Thursday, the 26th.
Thank you. Curriculum, Dr. Chimaleski, can you fill in for Mrs. Reed? Anything to report?
Yes, we did not meet last month due to inclement weather. We are meeting tomorrow at 4:00 in this room, and that is open to the public for those who want to come.
Thank you. Extracurricular, Mr. Wolf?
Just a couple updates. First of all, on February 3rd, I believe it was, we hosted a, it was part of the National Day of Signing, where many of our students involved in extracurriculars who have made a decision to go on in further education, as well as their athletic career, had a chance to be recognized, and where their, the school that they're planning on tending wore some garb with that on, and do a kind of mock signing. So it was a neat event. There's only 10 that showed up, there'll be more that will end up going on to further their careers, but it was a nice representation of our students, and once again, reinforce for me how important it is, not only to have a strong academic program here, but how important our extracurricular programs are and the opportunities they create for many of these students to further their education as well. So I do have a list, if you'd like to see it, the students that attended that. Our winter sports are pretty much wrapped up. We have five wrestlers that are going on into districts, 12 boys swimmers qualified for districts, 16 girls swimmers qualified for districts, two girls and three boys divers qualified as well. And then we have some individual championships for bowling coming up, and that will be wrapping up our winter sports at that point. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Regarding facilities, we essentially voted on 10 items that we discussed at great length at our last meeting, so I have nothing else to report. Finance, Mr. Ehrlich?
No report.
HR, Mr. Hop?
No report.
Legislative, Mr. Martin?
I'd like to have a couple items. One is just, you know, we talked about this before, it comes up every other year in the Assembly, but there's going to be, Tim Mahoney is going to introduce legislation to possibly consolidate school districts again, which has been, you know, on and off for the last five years. So that will be coming up in the next committee meetings. And also, this one kind of bothers me a little bit. Not that, Wolf proposes that tax on drilling for the gas, the shale, and I don't have an issue with the tax, although that's just another tax pass on the consumers, they have to pay for it, but what he said is kind of misleading, and that's why I hate politics. But he mentioned in his press release that the Commonwealth ranks 45th in the nation in percentage of state funding for public schools, and as a result, we can't fund, we've seen larger classes, fewer teachers, and end of vital programs. That's a correct statement. The problem with that is Pennsylvania leads the nation in the top 10 in spending in education, so what he's saying is technically correct. However, when you look at all the sources that funds education in Pennsylvania, we rank 10th in the nation in funds per student, so I don't like...
So Mike, he's omitting the local tax millages that are charged.
Everything else.
Which is the fundamental revenue source for funding schools in Pennsylvania.
Right, exactly. So I, and when people see this, they go, "Oh, wow, this is horrible," but they don't know the whole story. So I'm just letting you folks know the, as they say, the rest of the story. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. PR, I don't see Kristen.
Kristen is ill today.
Okay. Mrs. Mack, any information regarding PR?
No, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to, no.
All right, that's all right. Thank you. Technology, Dr. Chimaleski?
We did not have a meeting in February, which was scheduled, I believe we're meeting the first Monday in March, though, correct? And that meeting will be upstairs, not downstairs.
Thank you. Student outreach, Abby, Stan has some wonderful news.
Yes, I am proud to report that Mini-Thon was a huge success. Not only did we exceed our goal, or did we reach our goal, we exceeded it by over $11,000 and reached a total of $61,254.20 for the Four Diamonds Fund, which is incredibly exciting. We only raised $23,000 last year, which is an incredible jump. The event itself was very well attended by students and the community, so student government and the whole Mini-Thon group would like to thank everybody who came and supported us. In other news, one of the high school sports marketing classes is hosting a dodgeball tournament next Sunday, but otherwise, thank you to everyone who was participating in that.
I just want to apologize, but there was another event that was going on simultaneously, and that was the Central Penn League Swimming Championships, so there were a large number of kids that, and parents who probably would have more than wanted to attend but were kind of stuck sweltering in the pool. I also want to thank Abby and all the students and staff that worked on this, because it was a tremendous undertaking. That happened to be the weekend, but it was over a long span of time planning, and I got quite a few emails from members of our community saying, not only was it nice that they generated that revenue for a worthy cost, but they said, "It was just a blast." They just really liked it, their kids liked it, it was a family-friendly event, and it was just a win the whole way around. So it's just, we're very appreciative of all the efforts of our students that worked on this.
Great job. Mr. Maravich, any report?
No report.
Is there any other business this evening from the board?
I just, I failed to neglect that Dr. Chimaleski mentioned, but our, both our boys' and girls' swim teams did win the Central Penn League Championship, and then this weekend, we hosted the individual qualifications essentially for them to move on to districts. And I took a picture, I forgot to email it to Mrs. Raffoff to get it around, but I'll pass it around. I was tickled to see this. It's a podium that was made out of recycled bleachers from the lower house, bleachers that were torn out, so it was nice to see a nice addition to our facilities without a line item on our agenda to pay for it. So I think we owe Mr. Luft the credit for doing that, so I'll pass that around so everyone can see that.
Is there any other business this evening from the board? And is there any public participation on non-agenda items this evening?
No, there is not.
Brenda, we wish you a speedy recovery. We hope to see you soon. And with that, Brenda, do you have any motions to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I'd like to move you to adjourn this meeting and thank you for your wishes. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Is there a second to adjourn this evening?
Of course.
Dr. Chimaleski, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you. Good night, Brenda.
Good night. Thank you. Good night. Bye.[1754.65]